Good afternoon, everyone. I'm Kim Melnick, School Board Chair, and the Administrative, Informal, and Workshop Session of this meeting of the School Board of the City of Virginia Beach, Virginia is hereby convened at four o'clock on this twelfth day of November, 2024. At this time, I will ask Madam Clerk to please announce the role.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Present in the School Board Chamber are Chair Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, Ms. Anderson, Ms. Brown, Mr. Callen, Mr. Culpepper, Ms. Kendrick, Ms. Riggs, and Ms. Weems.
Okay, for the record, right now, we are missing Ms. Manning and Ms. Owens. Um, I believe Ms. Owens is in traffic. Okay, all right. Starting this afternoon with administrative matters and reports, do any School Board members have anything to report? Okay, see, nothing then. We will move into All in Virginia update, and we welcome Dr. Lorena Kelly, Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. Welcome.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, School Board members, Dr. Robertson. My name is Lorena Kelly. I'm the Executive Director of Elementary Teaching and Learning. I'm here with several of my colleagues this evening to provide you with a brief update on how the School Division continues to utilize the funds from All in Virginia provided to us by the state at the beginning of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. Recall, under the All in Initiative, our division received approximately twenty million dollars from the Commonwealth. Seventy percent of the funds were designated to provide funding for academic tutoring in grades three through eight for students who scored in the low or not proficient range on recent SOL tests. Twenty percent were provided to help with the implementation of the Virginia Literacy Act, and ten percent were designated to reduce chronic absenteeism. The state has provided some flexibility to shift monies within three categories as deemed necessary and with prior authorization from the Virginia Department of Ed. This evening, I will begin with high-intensity tutoring. School leadership continues to provide each school funds from the Virginia All-in Funding Source in addition to Title I and Division Funding Sources to support remediation and intervention. As you are aware, we are all, we have always provided multiple tutoring opportunities based on student needs utilizing Title I and remediation funds, and when we were provided this additional funding support from All-in, we were able to greatly expand the current tutoring services and resources and add new resources. This information was scare, shared with the School Board in October of 2023. We're very excited that the funding carries over to the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. Schools are already meeting student needs by using funds to compensate tutors to provide targeted and research-based tutoring to all students. Examples of the resources we're able to utilize and expand can be seen here. Imagine Math is a program which offers on-demand differentiated digital math lessons and tutoring that is adapted to the performance of the learner. The resource was added for elementary schools last year through ESSR and will be continued through the All-in Funding this year. Zern is a free math resource from the state for K through eight and has been utilized, but at a lower rate. Lexia Core Five and Power Up are grounded in evidence-based research and are available through the Virginia Department of Ed. We have a limited number of licenses that we're able to use from now until May of 2025, and elementary and middle school students are using those licenses to support students that have demonstrated need for acceleration as determined by the All-in Playbook. Additionally, we were able to fund twenty special education tutors from university instructors through the All-in Funds. And finally, Varsity Tutors, a free on-demand tutoring source, provided by the Virginia Department of Ed, is also linked on our website for the public to access. Keeping in mind that All-in expanded our approaches, I want to note that a few other great resources continue to support us as well. Title I Funding and Academic Support Funds provide tutors for all students. Additionally, FEB Tutoring continues to be accessed by our students for on-demand homework help and scheduled tutoring lessons. Please know that we other, offer other supports such as our Early Literacy Intervention Hours weekly to qualifying students. This includes resources from remediation to acceleration using Virginia Department of Ed programs such as SIPS and Read 180. We began this school year fully staffed with our Early Literacy Support Staff who implemented in, who implement interventions as required through the Early Reading Intervention or Erie Grant. This was formerly PALS. Additionally, we have currently almost five hundred tutors who are supporting our schools. So we're always eager to welcome additional tutors. Another area All-in Funds have been used to support is chronic absenteeism. I will provide you with a brief update on our work to address chronic absenteeism. Mr. Delaney and Mr. Jameson shared our progress related to chronic absenteeism with you in February. Here you can see a summary of the efforts. We launched Everyday Labs in March of last school year, and fourteen thousand nine hundred and eight students' attendance improved after receiving nudges from Everyday Labs. We're continuing our agreement for this school year. The first set of nudges were sent in September and October, and staff engaged in a series of professional learning opportunities to learn more about the available resources through Everyday Labs. With more awareness and understanding of what Everyday Lab has to offer, staff have leveraged their attendance dashboard to readily respond to student and family needs. Our Attendance Ambassador Program is continuing this school year at Bird Neck and Lynn Haven. We experienced great success with this program at Bird Neck last school year and noted a nine percent reduction in chronic absenteeism throughout the second semester. For this school year, we've added four ambassadors and now have eight ambassadors supporting selected schools. We will be hosting an event at the school for the eight Attendance ambassadors along with their coordinator to meet with students, outline expectations, and establish rapport. Schools continue to pull their student response teams together to analyze attendance data for students at risk of chronic absenteeism and partner with families, teachers, and the students to encourage regular attendance and put interventions in plan, plans in place. As was also shared during the chronic absenteeism presentation, the Virginia Department of Ed is providing School Divisions the opportunity to provide flexible instruction time that can be used to recover lost time due to student absences using classroom instruction methods outside of the normal school day. In order to meet this standard, we must ensure that several guidelines are followed to include that instructional time must be in-person, outside of the normal instructional day, and that the student is taught by a licensed teacher. As you are very aware by now, the Virginia Literacy Act has brought many changes, and the funding provided by the Virginia Department of Ed through All-in did support our division in addressing a portion of the cost endured to this, due to this legislation. During the May ninth, 2023 School Board Meeting, we provided an update on the Virginia Literacy Act. We also shared the new 2024 Standards of Learning were being published, and as you know, new standards have an impact on many things: textbooks, adoption, curriculum resources, report cards. We're supporting schools as they continue to navigate all these changes impacted by the new standards, and with your support, we were able to adopt HMH inter-reading at the end of last school year using All-in Funds. Teachers were provided access to the materials and the professional learning throughout the summer. We also shared the Virginia Literacy Act requirements around professional learning. Additionally, the law provides specific requirements to ensure evidence-based literacy instruction is implemented in all K-five classrooms for, for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year with the provisions to expand to six-eight. And as you know, information from the Virginia Department of Ed and VLP continues to be updated regarding professional learning requirements. Currently, we have over two thousand six hundred teachers registered for the Virginia Department of Ed Evidence-Based Learning Instruction Modules, and we're also using funds to pay for travel expenses when necessary for professional learning requirements such as in-person reading specialist training. This evening, we're working with you to receive approval of the updated Division Literacy Plan, and from there, we will submit that to the state. We will also continue to follow guidance from the Virginia Department of Ed and purchase supplemental and intervention resources from the approved list for K, for six through eight. We also shared that the Virginia Literacy Act require, has requirements pertaining to the administration of the Virginia Language Literacy Screening System or VOWS Assessment and student reading plans, and we're providing support to teachers as they're developing these reading plans for K through three students identified in that high random, high band of risk through the vowels. We're inspired by all teachers, veterans, and new as they work with literacy coaches, administration, and the Department of Teaching and Learning to learn the new standards, the curricular resources, and continue to provide our students effective, evidence-based learning experiences. We've added resources in the Integrated System of Support site to support reading specialists as they partner with teachers to develop plans. We appreciate your support as we work with you to receive approval of the updated Division Literacy Plan, which we hope to receive this evening, and we will continue to support our K-A teachers to meet the requirements set forth by the state. As you may recall, School Divisions may carry over funds that were unspent at the conclusion of the twenty-three, twenty-four school year over the next two years. The figures displayed in the first column represent estimates of remaining funds as of October twenty-fifth, 2024. The figures in the next column represent funds that have been expended or we have a formal commitment to pay, such as a contract for services. As you can see, the state's All-in Initiative is making great difference for Virginia Beach Public Schools, and our schools are working diligently to utilize the support to increase student achievement. That brings us to the conclusion of our presentation today. Our team stands ready if you have any questions.
I'm waiting for the board. There we go. Ms. Anderson?
So, at the end of this year, we still have funds left over. We can use it for the following year, which would be twenty-five, twenty-six school year, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I just wanted to reaffirm that. That's all. Thank you. Good job.
Thank you. Thank you.
Ms. Kendrick?
I just want to echo, um, the good job, especially as it pertains to, um, your efforts in chronic absenteeism. It's, um, very impressive to see this progress. Thank you.
Yeah, it really is. Anybody else? The reading resource training that we send teachers to, where is that?
So, the reading specialist had, yes, um, they have them in different locations. So it depends on, um, the amount of space. So they've been offered in Richmond, Newport News, um, they, they're doing them all over.
Okay.
Virginia, basically. We always try to do them very close to us if there's space.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Ms. Riggs?
I didn't hear it if you said it, but, um, how long is that training? What, what does it entail?
For the reading specialist, two days.
Two days?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, and you said there were twenty-six? How many, two thousand? How many did you say you had already?
Oh, um, the, two thousand six hundred teachers, those are teachers. They're taking the modules, the campus modules.
Okay.
Our reading specialist, all the, all those reading specialists who were in place last year, they went through the training last year, and anyone who's new this year as a reading specialist, we're putting them through this year because all reading specialists will have to go through that, and that's the two-day Virginia Department of Ed professional learning.
And the Virginia Department of Ed, um, supplies that for us, right?
They're the ones who create the training, and yes, we send our, our reading specialist to that training.
And how many, um, tutors did you say we have?
Almost five hundred, like four hundred ninety-six.
You guys are working so well. Thank you. So hard. Thank you.
Bringing people to us. Thank you.
Ms. Brown?
Thank you, and I appreciate everything you guys have done. Um, this is a very important, uh, thing for our division. Um, I do have a question about slide ten. Um, it's the All-in Spending Update. If my quick math is mathing, um, there's about six hundred thousand, um, dollars remaining between, uh, remaining and obligated. Uh, what are our plans for those six hundred thousand dollars?
We have, uh, actually an application that we have to complete, so all of the money is, um, allocated in areas. I can't tell you without looking back at the plan right now exactly where that falls, um, but we do have a plan in place that had to be approved by the Virginia Department of Ed, so we can look back and see, um, and I could, I work with our grant manager very closely, so we'll be able to, um, provide you that information if there is a, um, disconnect between what we have up here and any other funds.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Oh, I can't see. I'm sorry. Ms. Owens?
Sorry, uh, I was prompted by other questions, so, uh, the two-day training for our reading specialist is provided by VDOE. Are they staying overnight? I know it's not here, but we try and do it as close as possible. And, uh, are the funds for their transportation and/or hotel provided through VDOE, or is that a mandate that, uh, our division has to pick up?
So we're using rigid, we're using All-in Funds to, um, pay for any travel, and you're exactly right. If it's near here, then we, we don't have to get any, um, overnight accommodations, but if they have to travel somewhere else, we are using All-in Funds to cover that.
Wonderful.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay, and now? And now, um, our last update this evening is our cell phone free education update, and we welcome Mr. Matthew Delaney, Chief Schools Officer. Welcome.
Thank you. Uh, good afternoon, Chairwoman Melnick, Vice Chair Franklin, members of the board, and Dr. Robertson. I'm here this afternoon to provide you with an update on cell phone free education. As you know, we conducted our initial School Board Workshop on Executive Order thirty-three at the October eighth meeting. The purpose of that presentation was just to provide a summary of the final guidance from the VDOE on cell phone free education, identify the differences in the guidance from our current policy and regulations, and to share the initial steps that we would take in developing a cell phone free education. And at the conclusion of that presentation, we shared that we would be back today with an update. So the purpose of this presentation is a little bit different, but it's to provide an update on our response to the guidance for a cell phone free education, really highlight the major difference in the guidance from our current policy and regulations, and then again, share the next steps we're going to take in responding to a cell phone free education. Just as a reminder, Governor Youngkin's Executive Order thirty-three was rele, was released on July ninth, 2024. The order directed the Department of Education to establish a cell phone free education to include providing detailed, age-appropriate restrictions, or the elimination of cell phones and personal communication devices during instructional time in Virginia public schools. The final guidance for a cell phone free education states that every School Division and local School Board should review existing policies and our work to create revised policies that adhere to the minimum guidance no later than January first, 2025. Although we did a deeper review of the final guidance at the October eighth School Board Workshop, I'd like to highlight the major difference between the guidance from our current regulation. School Board Regulation three dash six five point one focused more on instructional setting rather than instructional time. The guidance for a cell phone free education emphasizes instructional time specifically bell-to-bell, which is defined in the slide, of meaning when the first bell rings at the start of the school day to begin instructional time until the dismissal bell rings at the end of the academic school day, meaning that we prohibit cell phones and personal communication devices from bell-to-bell. As you know, this has the greatest impact, or as we've shared, this has the greatest impact specifically for our high school students, as bell-to-bell includes lunch and time in between class periods. Moving to bell-to-bell will be an adjustment for our high school students, our teachers, and administrators. At the workshop again on the eighth, I shared that we would be working on reviewing specific components of the guidance displayed on this slide. Mr. Freeman and the Office of Security Emergency Management are really working to ensure that we appropriately share training to manage crisis situations, reunification plans, and family notification processes during crisis situations. Have you heard Mr. Freeman say oftentimes, we have to be very careful in how much we share regarding some security practices so that we don't kind of, uh, highlight any vulnerabilities? We will also clearly define family-based emergencies in our opening of school documents that are attributed to families at the start of the year, and we'll update those documents. In terms of our procedures for identifying any exceptions, we've really had ours in place the last several years. Uh, Dr. Myers-Dobb and, uh, Ms. Day have looked back over IRP and five oh four procedures. We're in compliance right now. Uh, we have the ability to provide alternative accommodations for those that do not require a cell phone. And in terms of health plans, we've also had a process in place, uh, that Ms. Suwala works through. Uh, it typically requires a doctor's order and her approval. Uh, we have several diabetic students that are able to utilize their phone appropriately during medical, uh, to monitor their condition. Throughout the month of October, Dr. Robertson held three informational sessions. He provided an overview of Executive Order thirty-three, shared opportunities on how parents should engage with their child, as well as provide comments to the School Board. At the conclusion of the meeting, attendees could submit comments on what they hope for their child and what they feared for their child as a result of a cell phone-free educational environment. So the community's concerns about a cell phone-free school environment highlights several recurring themes. The themes related to what they hope for their child are highlighted on the screen. Improved focus in academic engagement. Essentially, they hope they can gain a more productive educational experience and be more effectively able to focus on their academics. In terms of enhanced social skills and intera, and interpersonal interaction, they hope they engage more fully with peers in person. Increased independence and responsibility. They really hope that they adapt to changing situations outside of home without reaching for a device or texting the parent to fix it. In terms of compliance and respect for the rules, they hope that they respect the rules and comply with the guidelines. They also talked about reduced anxiety related to device use. They hope they can have less anxiety about feeling disconnected or missing something when not having their phone. Here are the main themes with regard to what they fear their child will, and the first one is no surprise, it's safety and emergency communication. They fear that they will not have immediate access to their parent in the case of urgent, serious school emergency. Mental health and emotional security. They fear the risk of increased anxiety of phones, which for some provide a sense of security, are not available. Distraction, substitution, and noncompliance. They fear that their student is not willing to change the behavior and will find other ways to be distracted. Social and peer interactions concerns. They fear that bullying may stop with the phones away during the school day, but will still happen before or after school when students can regain access to their phones. Loss of academic and extracurricular communication. They fear they'll miss important information about meetings, tutoring, or schedule changes sent out on the day of the activity. And preparedness for real-world device management. They fear that their children won't learn to manage cell phone use responsibly and effectively, which is skill needed for college in the real world. At the October Policy Review Committee meeting, we were directed to develop policy that more aligns to the intent of the guidance and revise the current regulation to meet the guidance. Our current policy and regulation is in Section Three, which is Business and Instructional Operations, and the committee that believed it made more sense to move that policy to a Section Five, which is related to students. We will present the revision at the November twenty-first Policy Review Committee. The draft does include bell-to-bell instructional time, procedures for off-site events, and activities, uh, that, and determines cell phone use, including before and after school, on school buses, within the school building, and on school grounds. In terms of next steps, as I just shared, at November twenty, twenty-first, we'll share the draft of the Policy Review Committee regarding the policy and the regulation. On November twenty-sixth, we have a School Board informational item with the hope of the December tenth School Board Meeting taking action so we can finalize preparation based on the School Board decisions. Please know that we are engaging with our principals, specifically our high school principals, some student advisory groups, and other stakeholders as we finalize that presentation. At this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions.
Ms. Anderson?
Just curious, how many parents, um, had input in this? I mean, I know you, you've had some, Dr. Robertson?
We had ninety-five total attendees at those three sessions.
Okay.
So they were given that opportunity at the end of those sessions to use the QR code and provide that level of feedback. Uh, honestly, I don't think any of us are surprised by what they said is their hopes and what their fears are, but to answer your question, we had ninety-five total attendees.
Thank you. Ms. Owens?
Thank you. Guess this is more of a, um, related, but not direct to the, I'll just ask it. The kind of newer or updated definition that we're using for instructional time, uh, with the bell-to-bell academic day, um, I know that currently the way we look at our instructional time does not, uh, account for some of that lunch period time.
Correct.
Um, and although our board has decided, uh, that they are not looking at instructional hours during the year, just days, uh, is there a way that we could, uh, be updated of what this brings our new instructional time to for a year? Um, whether we're going to use that for calendar purposes or not, it might be helpful to know what that number looks like compared to what the instructional, uh, hours are that are required from the state, just so that we're always operating off of, uh, informed decision-making.
We certainly, as we've talked about, uh, class changes do count as instructional time. Lunch is excluded, so I just give you that context as you're asking that question now for considering lunch to be instructional time. Where does that fit in? We can look at that for you. We currently define in our regulation instructional setting is where we spend most of our language, but we'll take a look at that, Ms. Owens, in terms of lunch.
Okay, and so for the, the definition, it's just going to say bell-to-bell? It's not instructional time? Cause it's...
Instructional, bell-to-bell is how they utilize the language around instructional time from the final guidance, the moment that first bell rings to the end of the day. I don't know if they used it in terms of the VDOE classification, uh, which we see as instructional time. This is how they're defining it in terms of the cell phone regulation, guidance.
Okay, I am hoping that however the definitions are being used at the state level, that we are using them consistently in our, um, in our level as well. And so if they are, if there has been a change where the state level is saying instructional time includes lunch because it is bell-to-bell, all instructional time for no phone use, then I want our, uh, policies and regulations to mirror what the state has, uh, put out for us. Thank you.
Mr. Culpepper?
Sorry, she brought a question for me too. So just to clarify, uh, uh, at least part of what I think she was asking, your slide five, it says, uh, difference between VDOE Guidance and VBCS Regulation Three, uh, text six five point one. I don't know, if she understood your answer, maybe I just didn't quite, so I just want to verify. So the video, VDOE is saying instructional time is, uh, any structured or unstructured learning experiences from bell-to-bell, and our instruction is just saying more broadly, it's bell-to-bell?
No, it's a good question. We focus on instructional setting. We did not utilize the term definition of instructional time to drive our cell phone regulation. We used instructional setting. And so if I read that definition for you, instructional setting means any location where a staff member is providing instruction or instruction-related administrative, medical, or health-related activities included but not limited to classrooms, libraries, scholas, gymnasiums, and so on. We did not say specific to bell-to-bell, which includes lunch and hallway transitions. We focused on instruct, where instruction is taking place, not the time. Okay.
Okay, I think I took exactly the opposite from the brief before. So our bell-to-bells specifically does not include, for example, lunch. Lunch is not an academic setting.
Correct. We do not use the term bell-to-bell.
Okay, we do not use the term bell-to-bell. All right. I took almost exactly the opposite from that.
Okay. Well, I'm glad I got to present again, so I hope that helped.
So let's just clarify, right now, the way, the way we operate right now, students can use their cell phones at lunch and in between class changes.
Specifically, high school students. So thank you for, again, asking the clarifying questions. I appreciate it, because I assume we were all on the same wavelength, so I appreciate the question. Middle schoolers, backpack in a locker.
Correct.
Elementary school students, the same. High school students have the ability to use it during class changes and during lunch. Now, some might ask why. We have students on the high school level that are coming and going all day long. Excuse first block, show up second block, leave to go to the tech center, ATC Environmental Studies, come back. There's just so much more movement across the building, inside and out on the high school level, that makes it a little bit more challenging to monitor hallway traffic. Lunch as well, just the opportunity for them to use it during that time, but it certainly would be the adjustment if we go to bell-to-bell that will need to be made. I hope that helps.
Did that help?
Please ask any more clarifying questions, because I don't want anything lingering as we're still processing this.
Keep going.
I think I'm just going to restate what you said. Elementary school, middle school, it is bell-to-bell, essentially. Put your backpack, put it away.
You could say it that way, correct.
Don't want to see it all day.
Yeah, you could, we've just never defined it that way, but you're correct.
That's what you were driving at, though.
Yes, correct.
But then in high school, you can have your backpack. You can use it in between classes and so on.
Correct.
Ms. Anderson.
So one of the things that, one of the parents apparently, or somebody said at one of the parent meetings, was that they were concerned about preparedness for the real world, like when they go to college, for example. You know, they're, and, and just learning how to behave and how to act with a phone. When was the appropriate time as an adult? So that's my concern in that, and then it was already pointed out that lunchtime is not considered instructional time. And so I, I'm not saying that I, that I am a hundred percent, but for all day from bell-to-bell, because I do feel like during their lunchtime might be a time that we might say, okay, you can use your phone if you need to, or whatever. I'm, I'm just, I'm just not so sure that I'm willing to say you, bell-to-bell, from the morning bell to the afternoon bell. And as you said, and I'm talking about the high school kids, the second, from ninth, ninth, tenth, and eleventh, and twelfth graders. I just, I'm leery about saying you can't have your phone even during lunch. I just feel like that's not teaching them a responsible way to use their phone. Absolutely should, their phones should be turned off during instructional time. And if you want to consider that from the first bell in the morning until they go to lunch, and then the, the bell at the end of lunch until, well, they leave at the end of the day, that's fine with me. But I think they should be allowed to use it on, on the bus. I think they should be allowed to use it if they change. For, because I mean, some, a lot of our high school kids even drive, so they're going to be using their phones in their cars, obviously. But I just, I think, I think saying bell-to-bell from the morning bell to the afternoon bell is just, for me, a bit too restrictive. And I, I would like to be able to say that a high school student should learn a responsible way when to turn their phone on and when to turn their phone off. You can have it turned off, and you're not going to get many notifications, even with your phone turned off, even if you're wearing a smartwatch, you won't get as many notifications. But, and that's the other thing. A lot of kids have smartwatches, and they're going to get some notifications no matter what. So I, I, sometimes I think we're just being too, too, too restrictive when it comes to that. But that's just where I'm at right now, my feeling about it, and I don't know how administration wants to deal with that.
Ms. Riggs.
Yes, I, I was just kind of clarifying here for, for the public. So the, the guidance is saying high school students will not be using their phones between classes. They will not be using their phones at lunch. So that's the adjustment that we're talking about and leaning to, correct?
That is correct.
All right. And I know I asked this last time, and I don't know if you've been able to talk with other school divisions, but, or any school divisions doing it the way the guidance, the way the VDOE is guiding us to do?
Yeah, as I, as I shared at the last meeting, Williamsburg, James City County is doing it. We've had some principals reach out, and we met with high school principals today. We're going to send some over there to have some conversations, to really see, talk to kids. Their hearing's still very positive. Reports back that kids have adjusted. Certainly, they're not saying it's a hundred percent foolproof. I don't think anybody expects that. But they've, they've been pleased with the student response to it. We may send some folks over to see what exactly they're looking at. Again, you have, you have school divisions that don't use one lunch. We use one lunch. And that is, as you know, has its lack of significant, everybody in one spot at one time. But it also provides significant opportunities for tutoring, club meetings, and other things that they find of great value. So that's a little bit of the concern our high school principals have of how do we moderate that usage during that time, or what do we do? So we're, we're working, Dr. Brower and I are working with them to kind of find some resolutions there that they can feel comfortable with, depending on the board's direction.
Have you reached out to any local private schools?
I have, no, we have not.
To see how they manage it, because I know a lot of them have the bell-to-bell, that cell phones are not brought out at all. And I guess we'll hear in the next meeting, when is it, December or something, November twenty-sixth?
November twenty-sixth.
About your suggestions of where the phones will be during the day. Is that correct?
It'll depend, I think, on the final kind of desires from the Policy Review Committee. We certainly have our thoughts of where they would be.
All right. You know, and, and I think this will definitely be an adjustment, but I think that, you know, part, part of the reason is, is instructional disturbances during, obviously during class. But I think the other reason, too, is the, the social, socialization of our children. And I would love to see them actually talking to each other a lot and getting used to that instead of always be on the phone. Thank you.
Ms. Riggs.
I just wanted to make a couple of comments. I was at one of our high schools a week or two ago, and I, I was concerned about the social interaction, too. But I happened to be there when they were, there when lunch took place. And as I walked out with the principal, I watched the students. They were on their phones. However, the whole time, they were interacting with each other. I mean, the whole time. They weren't just like this. They were interacting, some were doing some word games with it. I mean, there was lots of interaction, because I was concerned about that, too. Lots of talking to each other. It was, you know, you saw a lot of interaction. And I was thinking, yeah, they weren't getting it. Oh, they were getting plenty of interaction with each other. So I did want to point that out. And the other thing is, with high schools, there is so much notification that these kids need, like, you know, for their sports, for their after-school activities. It's really difficult. For their jobs, things happened that they're texted, you know. And so for them to be able to, I'm like Ms. Anderson, be able to check it at lunchtime would be advantageous for all of them. And I think it'll be very difficult for our administrators to be monitoring, even though they're going to. They're going to do whatever we ask them to do, but you've got them, you know, how much education can they monitor compared to how much just monitoring? Because there's everything nook and cranny these kids are in in our high schools, and they're all there. It's like walking into a mall and having to take care of everybody that's on their cellphone. So that concerns me as well. It's going to be a very difficult thing. I'm, I'm well, you know, ready to see cell phones not demanding so much of everybody's time. But I think we need to think about how much they have become a help to our students in high school and the activities they do. And, I mean, they don't use, they don't use cameras anymore for their yearbooks and that. They use their phones, you know, to take their pictures for the yearbooks and that kind of stuff. So it's just something that I think that we need to think about, and I just wanted to put that information in.
Ms. Owens.
Yep, and this is maybe more so for Policy Review Committee as we're going to go back and, and take a look at it. But I, as our division is, and all divisions, are looking more at an internship component with our high school students and having them spend some of the instructional day outside of the building. I don't want us to set up a situation that means they can't have their GPS on in their car as they're going to their internship site or, or back from their internship site, because it would still be considered part of the instructional day. And so I just want to make sure that we're considering all of the intricacies that come with a just bell-to-bell hard no, and not allowing for the discernment of, hey, there's going to be some times when it's going to be appropriate and some times when it's absolutely not, because you're in a classroom setting, and I don't want them using it when they are at the internship site. Although, some of the internships may have a, a piece where it involves some phone use. And so just being mindful of, of all those things, even if they know how to get to the site. It's just a part of how people drive now, to put their location in and be aware of things that are being told to them on the, on the way there. And so just something to consider. Thank you.
So I understand both sides, but let's be honest, the onus is going to be on the teachers and the principals. And that's, that's where my worry really lies, is an uptick in discipline infractions. That's what I worry about. Or parents who say, "I don't care what your policy is. My child's going to have that phone." And so those are the little things that I really worry about. So I know you mentioned that you're sending principals out to see school divisions and how they're dealing with it. But let's also be very mindful, colleagues, that our school division is so much larger than these other schools. And so we talk about, I mean, James City County is eleven thousand students. And so, you know, we have two thousand students in all of our high schools. Our high school population is greater than the entirety of James City, Williamsburg County. So good luck, and we look forward to your next report.
Am I going somewhere that I need luck? I'll be best.
That's it. You have my blessing. And, you know, here's the, I was in church on Sunday, and there was this lovely, lovely baby in front of me, under a year old. She was darling. She was so good until about right after the homily. And then what came out but the cellphone? And it's what actually kept that child okay until the end of Mass. And I'm talking little fingers that could do this and knew, and, and knew all of that. And so the introduction of cell phones happens at a very, very early age. And like so many things that we had growing up that our parents did not, this is something that children now have that we did not. And that's why it's so easy for us to say, well, we didn't have it and we survived. The truth is, we didn't know it, and that's how we survived. So again, good luck, and we look forward to your report after Ms. Brown answers her.
I always got a stern look from Lieutenant Colonel John Delaney in church when I was acting up like that, and it had the same effect as a cellphone, so I can certainly appreciate what that child was going through.
That will work, I'm sure, one day, but that baby was under one.
It worked for me in a variety of ways, that's for sure.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah, I just wanted to add that during our last Policy Committee, we did ask for some recommendations from administration, and we're going to do our due diligence in analyzing those, editing them. We will need a placeholder for that November twenty-sixth meeting because of the timing that our PRC meeting is, compared to it, so that we can have a vote on whether or not this will be or which parts will be implemented on time. So, thank you.
We have great faith in you two and your committee, Ms. Anderson.
I just want to say that we don't give you the easy jobs. You had calendar, and now you have cell phones, so for some reason, you are chosen.
Sins of my youth, Ms. Anderson, sins of my youth. I'll shave when the calendar is adopted. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness, that is hysterical. Thank you for the laugh at the end. Thank you. Well, that brings us to the end of our workshop this afternoon, which gives us plenty of time for some closed sessions. So I will turn to my colleague, Mrs. Franklin, and ask her to read in close.
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings. Law set forth in Code of Virginia two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven, Part A, Paragraph one, two, seven, and eight, as amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments, of schools, of public institutions of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation, where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the disclosure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter, namely to discuss, A, settlement offer and negligence claim, B, student discrimination appeal, C, status pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
All right, motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Uh, the voting board is open?
Ms. Riggs, how do you vote? So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Okay, we are now in closed session. Okay, we are now in closed session. happens at a very, very early age. And like so many things that we had growing up that our parents did not, this is something that children now have that we did not. And that's why it's so easy for us to say, "Well, we didn't have it and we survived." The truth is, we didn't know it. And that's how we survived. So, um, again, good luck and we look forward to your report after Ms. Brown answers her.
I always got a stern look from Lieutenant Colonel John Delaney in church when I was acting up like that. And it had the same effect as a cellphone, so I can certainly appreciate what that child was going through.
That will work, I'm sure, one day, but that baby was under one.
It worked for me in a variety of ways, that's for sure.
Ms. Brown.
Yeah, I just wanted to, um, add that, um, during our last policy committee, we, um, did ask for some recommendations from administration and we're gonna, um, do our due diligence in analyzing those, editing them. Um, we will need a placeholder for that November twenty-sixth meeting, um, because of the timing that our PRC meeting is, um, compared to it so that we can have a vote on whether or not this will be or which parts will be implemented, um, on time. So, thank you.
We have great faith in you two and your committee, Ms. Anderson.
I just wanna say that we don't give you the easy jobs. You had calendar and now you have cellphones, so for some reason, you are chosen.
Sins of my youth, Ms. Anderson, sins of my youth. I'll shave when the calendar is adopted. Thank you.
Oh, my goodness, that is hysterical.
That is so funny.
Thank you for the laugh at the end. Thank you. Um, well, that brings us to the end of our workshop this afternoon, which gives us plenty of time for some closed sessions. So I will turn to my colleague, Mrs. Franklin, ask her to read in close.
I move that the school board recess into closed session in accordance with the exceptions to open meetings. Law set forth in Code of Virginia two dot two dash thirty-seven eleven, Part A, Paragraph one, two, seven, and eight as amended to deliberate on the following matters. One, discussion, consideration, or interviews of prospective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers, appointees, or employees of any public body, and evaluation of performance of departments, of schools, of public institutions, of higher education, where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussion of the performance of specific individuals. Two, discussion or consideration of admission or disciplinary matters or any other matters that would involve the disclosure of information contained in a scholastic record concerning any student of any institution of higher education in the Commonwealth or any state school system. Seven, consultation with legal counsel and briefings by staff members or consultants pertaining to actual or probable litigation where such consultation or briefing in open meeting would adversely affect the negotiating or litigating posture of the public body. For the purposes of this subdivision, probable litigation means litigation that has been specifically threatened or on which the public body or its legal counsel has a reasonable basis to believe will be commenced by or against a known party. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the disclosure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Eight, consultation with legal counsel employed or retained by a public body regarding specific legal matters requiring the provision of legal advice by such counsel. Nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to permit the closure of a meeting merely because an attorney representing the public body is in attendance or is consulted on a matter. Namely to discuss, A, settlement offer and negligence claim, B, student discrimination appeal, C, status of pending litigation or administrative cases, D, consultation with legal counsel regarding probable litigation and pending litigation matters.
All right, motion made by Ms. Franklin, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Uh, the voting board is open.
Ms. Riggs, how do you vote?
Yes.
So, Madam Chair, we have ten ayes. The motion did pass to go into closed session.
Okay, we are now in closed session.
The City of Virginia Beach has convened a closed meeting on this date pursuant to an affirmative recorded vote and in accordance with the provisions of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act. And whereas section two dot two dash thirty-seven twelve D of the Code of Virginia requires a certification by the school board that such closed meeting was conducted in conformity with Virginia law, now therefore be it resolved that the school board of the City of Virginia Beach hereby certifies that to the best of each member's knowledge, one, only public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements by Virginia law were discussed in the closed meeting to which this certification applies. And two, only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which the closed meeting was convened were heard, discussed, or considered.
Okay, do I have a motion? Motion made by Ms. Brown, seconded by Ms. Anderson. Voting board is open?
So Madam Chair, we have ten ayes, so the motion did pass for certification of closed session.
Okay, it is five oh eight. We will reconvene at six o'clock.